The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, April 25, 2018 is now called to order. Mr. Paulson, will you call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Badami?
Here.
Commissioner Birch?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Janoff?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Vice Chair Hudes?
Here.
And Chair Kane?
Here. I would ask that everyone stand and join Commissioner Birch in pledging allegiance to the flag.
Please join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, united in the heavens and on earth.
The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process, which are cornerstone of democracy and essential to the planning commission conducting its business on behalf of the town council and citizens of the town. There are several ways for members of the public to participate in deliberations of the planning commission. Prior to a commission meeting, written comments concerning agenda items may be submitted to staff. They are always welcome and they are always helpful. At the meetings of the commission, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. During the verbal communications period, an individual may speak on any topic not on the agenda, and any member of the public may speak during the public hearing of an item that is on the agenda. If you wish to address the commission tonight during verbal communications or during the consideration of an agenda item, please complete a speaker card located on the back of the benches where you are seated. Turn the card into a staff member, and please print your name clearly, so I don't mess it up. For anyone who intends to speak this evening, I ask that you come up to the podium, adjust the microphone that you speak directly into it, state your name and address for the record. In fairness for all who want to speak at this meeting, it is requested you limit your comments to three minutes. In addition to their service on the planning commission, members of the commission serve on several town committees. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Vice Chair Hudes?
Yes, thank you. We had a meeting earlier today of the Historic Preservation Committee, and we considered several items. 223 Massal Avenue was back to us, I think, for the fourth time, and we approved unanimously the minor development request. 223 Massal was also back for discussion about an accessory structure, and that was approved three to one. And 128 Tate Avenue was a minor development in historic district, and we approved with a modification to the windows in the upper story. And lastly, 94 Hernandez was requesting preliminary review, which we gave feedback to the applicant to work with staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Hudes. Are there other—God bless you. Are there other committee reports? Seeing none, I'll move to the verbal communications portion of our meeting. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on any item not on the agenda for tonight, and I have no cards for verbal communications. Moving along. We move to the consent calendar portion of the meeting. Items on consent may be acted on on a single motion, but before the planning commission acts on the consent calendar, any member of the public or the commission may request that that item be removed. Tonight we have three items on consent. Number one, approval of the minutes of the April 11, 2018 planning commission meeting. Number two, 320 Santa Rosa Drive, CUP application U-18001, requesting approval for construction of a vineyard on property zoned HR2 1/2. This is APN 527 55037. And item three, 212 and 216 North Santa Cruz Avenue, a CUP application U-16001. This is a required six-month review for an approved CUP for a new fitness studio with group exercise classes on property zoned C2. This is APN 529 04085. Do we have a request to pull any of the items? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm not requesting yet. I want to ask you a question. It's probably obvious, but I'm missing it. Why is number two on the consent calendar?
Number two is on the consent calendar because staff doesn't have any concerns with the proposal for a vineyard.
And it requires—our approval. You don't have any concerns. We don't hear anything about it, and that's why it's on the consent calendar?
That's why we put things on the consent calendar.
Okay. Well, I ask that it be taken off the consent calendar.
Item two is removed. Any others? Vice Chair?
I'll just comment that I will be abstaining from just orally on approval of the minutes as I missed the meeting and haven't had a chance to review the tape yet.
All right. And Commissioner Hanson?
I need to recuse myself on item two. I live on the same street as the applicant, and I also sit on the board—Homeowners Association Board.
And item two is still on consent?
No, it's pulled. Item two's been pulled.
So you'll be excused when we get to that one. Okay. Commissioner Badami?
I'm excusing myself from item number three, as the project location is within 500 feet of my business location.
Okay. I think that leaves just you and me, Tom. We gotta—all right. So we have one item out, item number two. May I see a show of hands approving the consent calendar for items one and three? Thank you. So how do you want to proceed? You want to get right into number two?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
We would move on to item number two.
Let me first say—I'm sure it's very simple. It's just that I would kind of like to hear a little bit more about it. I appreciate it. I had a report there. It would feel better if you gave us a little report on it. So, please.
So staff does not have anything to add to the report. The applicant is requesting approval of a vineyard. Actually, the last vineyard that was on—the planning commission's calendar was actually on consent as well, but it was pulled by a member of the public. And so that is why we put this one on consent. The applicant is here, and he will be making a presentation and be available to answer questions. And if you have any specific questions, then I'll be able to answer those.
Okay. Again, I want to say I don't have any particular reason to argue with it being on consent. I just would like to hear a little bit about it, that's all.
No, I agree with you, actually, because I remember two, three years ago, Commissioner Badami and I went up to see a vineyard, and I wondered—I asked staff the same question: Why is this on consent? Why did we go up? What I'm recalling is it was on consent and it was pulled, and I guess that's why we went up.
Okay.
So, let's take a look at item number two. It's conditional use permit application U-18001, 320 Santa Rosa Drive. Property owner applicant is Harry Claboe, requesting approval for construction of a vineyard on property zoned HR2 and 1/2, APN 527 55037. Do we have a staff report?
I have nothing additional to add, other than what I just stated.
Do commissioners have questions for staff? Is the applicant present? I'll call forward—the—I'll call up the applicant. Sir, you'll have 10 minutes to address us and tell us about the project. Following that, the public will have an opportunity to speak to us. Following that, you'll have five minutes to add any additional comments. And I'll need a card, sir.
You can do it after your presentation.
Hi. Is this on? My name's Howard Claboe. I'm the property owner at 320 Santa Rosa Drive. This is Cody from Coastal Range Vineyards, who is working with me on the project, is available to answer any questions as well. This is a residential family vineyard, a small vineyard, for production of wine, just for our personal use. There's no grading to the property that we're going to do. There's no removal of any trees. We will be—it's actually laid out in two phases. Phase one is a 7,000-square-foot vineyard, which we would be planting, you know, hopefully soon, and then we're requesting a smaller vineyard on another part of the property that we would do at a later time. And, you know, it's all within the sort of the guidelines of the hillside zoning, and that's our request.
When I visited the property, I saw you had construction—no vines, but construction getting ready for the vines.
Correct.
As I looked off to my left.
Yes.
The additional property would be straight ahead to my right, behind the house?
Uh, yes. Like, on the other side of the house, there's nothing out there.
Questions for the speaker?
I guess I should say—I think it's an important thing. It sounds like a very good project. No objection to it.
Sure.
I just appreciate hearing from you, so—
Absolutely. No, happy to do it. And we've—we have worked, you know, extensively with the Homeowners Association, so we've done—Cody's worked with the Architectural Committee, you know, to review the site, to look at all the things that we want to do, and they've given us—they're sort of okay with the—with the project, so.
Thank you. Let's see if we have any comments from the public.
Just—for one—
Yes, sir.
Just to add to what Howard was—to his description of the project, a couple of the points that I think are important to consider, or just to be aware of, is there's no heavy machinery being used on the hillside. It's all by hand. The root structures of these vines, once they're established, will provide an enhanced erosion control method that's nonexistent right now on the hillside. Additionally, the hillside right now, as it exists, is a couple of older olive trees and light flashy fuel load during the summertime from the natural grasses. And so this vineyard also serves as a fire break up the hillside for the entire community that's on the eastern side of Mr. Claboe's house.
All right. Thank you. Any comments from the public? Then I guess you have five more minutes to add to these—
I would love to tell you about the wine. It's going to be really delicious. We're planning Chardonnay since nobody asked, but nothing—nothing further.
And—you said it was for private use?
Correct, yes.
And if the CUP was approved?
I'm sorry?
Well, I'm just trying.
Of course—you will all be invited out for the first harvest of—
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll turn to the commission for questions, comments, or a motion. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'll just make a motion that we approve the request. We'll find that the proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15304 of the California Environmental Quality Act. We'd make the findings as required by Section 292190 of the Town Code, which is set forth in Exhibit 2. We would make the required finding that the vineyard is consistent with HDS and G and hillside-specific plan, also see Exhibit 2, and we would therefore approve the conditional use permit identified as U-18001, with the conditions contained in Exhibit 3.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Birch?
I'll second.
Any comment? I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Passage unanimously six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to see if I can— We'll now move the public hearing portion of our agenda and consider item four, 17505 High Street, AMS application S-17025. AMS application S-17025, property owner applicant Michael Sullivan, requesting approval for construction of an addition greater than 100 square feet to an existing second story to exceed the maximum building height for a single-family residence and for site improvements requiring a grading permit on property zoned HR1. This is APN 53223037. May I see a show of hands from commissioners who have been able to visit the site? May I see a show of hands of commissioners who were able to walk the driveway? Are there any disclosures? Thank you. Mr. Mullen, will you give us a staff report?
Thank you, Chair Kane. Before you tonight is a request to construct an addition to an existing single-family residence, including a residence height exception and site improvements requiring a grading permit in the hillside area at 17505 High Street. The subject property is located on the north side of High Street and is developed with an existing two-story single-family residence. The lot descends approximately 90 feet from the roadway with an average slope of 40%, and the existing residence is a visible home because 25% or more of an elevation can be viewed—can be seen from two of the town's established viewing areas. The project is being forwarded to the planning commission with a request for several exceptions to the hillside development standards and guidelines, including exceeding the height limitations for a visible home, grading exceeding maximum allowable fill depths, driveway slopes exceeding 15% and development outside of the least restrictive development area. A detailed discussion of these exceptions is included in your staff report. Additionally, the staff report provides a summary of the review of the town's consulting architect and arborists. An addendum and desk item have been distributed to the commission, which include clarification on the building height changes, a project information sheet prepared by the Parks and Public Works Department, and additional public correspondence received after the publishing of the staff report. Based on the analysis provided in the staff report, staff recommends approval of the architecture and site applications subject to the recommended conditions included in Exhibit 3. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Hudes?
I just wanted to get clarification about the below-grade construction and whether—I understand there's a new ordinance regarding below-grade square footage and whether this is in compliance with it, although maybe it didn't have to be because the application was earlier than the ordinance, but in any case, it'd be good to understand whether it's in compliance with the current ordinance.
Thank you. The—the below-grade square footage would meet the definition of like below-grade square footage contained in the new ordinance, which is essentially the same language that was included in the former seller policy.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Hanson?
I just wanted to ask one question, and it was about the—the consulting architect's report. And—he didn't flag it as an issue, but he mentioned something about the tall walls, and then he concluded that it was—it made unity with the house and whatnot. So I just wanted to ask the question, did staff any—have any concerns about that at all? You didn't mention it in the report, but since he had mentioned it, he didn't make an issue out of it. I—I figured it wasn't, but just did it raise anything with you guys?
Mr. Cannon's mentioning of the tall walls, I believe, was in reference to the original plan that he saw. Very little changed from the first plan that he saw and what is currently in front of you, except that the applicant went to great lengths to reduce the wall heights and terrace the walls to fit more with along—to fit in with resident—the hillside development standards and guidelines and to be more in fitting with the site. So I believe Mr. Cannon was seeing some walls that were a little bit over height, but the applicant has reduced the size of those walls.
So you're saying the—the what the consulting architect saw was previous to what we're seeing today?
It was slightly different. In—in this case, he made a couple—he mentioned the walls, and then he made a couple recommendations regarding a glass or translucent garage door, and—it's slipping my mind—the second issue, but both were addressed to staff satisfaction. In this case, they were—those features were eliminated. The glass garage door was eliminated, and—and we didn't—it didn't warrant re-review by the consulting architect.
All right. Thank you.
I had a similar concern on the translucent door or whatever it was. As I understand it, the applicants agreed to make that out of some form of wood?
Correct, and the current plans reflect that. So there's no longer—the plans in front of you don't show a translucent door. It was the first or second iteration of the plans that Mr. Cannon reviewed, and as previously stated, the change—the applicant responded with a change that was very clear that he was eliminating the issue.
So he's complieded with both of Cannon's concerns. Excellent.
Correct.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Birch?
To clarify, you mentioned that one of the exceptions is the slope of the driveway, but they are actually improving the driveway, correct?
Correct. The—the Fire Department has a standard to limit to 15%, so does the the hillside development standards and guidelines, but they do have variances in their—in their terms to approve steeper driveways, and in this case, the Fire Department's reviewed it and approved this iteration of the plans.
And just for clarification, the existing driveway slope is 33%, and the proposed driveway slope is 20, so they are improving that situation.
Other questions for staff? I'll open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant up to 10 minutes to address the commission. Who will be speaking for the applicant? I'm going to guess it's the applicant.
Excellent. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Michael Sullivan, and I live at 17505 High Street. We're very excited to be here this evening. We've been working with staff for just about a year now on this project, and they've done a terrific job guiding us through this process. The staff report was very thorough, so we just have a brief presentation for you this evening to discuss the highlights of our project, as well as to discuss our community outreach. The existing home was built in 1964, and it's pretty much in original condition, so it's a bit functionally obsolescent now. It's essentially a two-bedroom home that lacks insulation and drywall, so when we turn on our AC, we start immediately cooling the valley. The property can only be accessed from the 35% slope, as a lot of you noticed when you were out there, with the most prominent feature being the A-frame that's at the front of the elevation facing the valley. And so removing that is going to make a quite a significant improvement. All of this provides us an excellent opportunity to improve the property and bring the property more in conformance with today's standards. As we've talked about the driveway, so that's—that's taking it from 33% down to 20. Our new conditions will require and will be building a new fire sprinkler system with the entirety of the house, so it's going to be a big improvement, as well as new exterior fire-rated materials for construction. We're also placing the addition immediately adjacent to the existing house, and we're building that back into the hillside just a little bit, and so it's an existing flat pad that we're not having to grade, and it's heavily forested around the addition, so it's really actually screened very quite well. We're also replacing all of the failing retaining walls that are throughout the property. We're going to be upgrading the home to include features such as solar, high-efficiency appliances, insulation, and windows as well. We're enclosing the carport, so we'll have a full functional two-car garage. In addition, we're going to be widening High Street, so we're kind of excited about that. That's something neighbors have appreciated as well because it's a little narrow where we've got parking, as well as the—the road there. So we're going to be widening that and building new retaining walls along High Street as well, so that's going to help reinforce the public street. So we're excited to be able to bring that benefit to the community. We've talked a lot about reducing the height, but basically what that is, is we're pulling the A-frame off, we're pulling the massing there for the roof back five feet into the hillsides, so we're bringing the full second floor back five feet, which is effectively lowering the profile of the home by about seven feet. So to the greatest extent possible, we've been working with staff to really make sure that our plans are in compliance with hillside design guidelines, excuse me, as well as town ordinances. Just a moment on our community outreach. We began that outreach early in 2017, meeting with all of our neighbors, showing them our plans. They've evolved over, of course, that year, and we've kept them updated as well. So we have about 20 letters of support, and to this date, we've not received any concerns with our plans. With that, I'm going to yield just a few minutes to my partner Teresa, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Wellington, and I live at 17505 High Street. I'd like to express what a pleasure it's been working on this project. And we've really come a long way over the last year and a half through various meetings with the town and with our neighbors, and we've really, really strived to create a home that will blend with our community and respects the hillside design guidelines to the greatest extent possible. We absolutely love living in Los Gatos, and this project has been a really fantastic opportunity to meet more of our neighbors and really get to know them. I've been very encouraged by the support and the kindness that we've received along the way. So with that, we thank you for considering our application this evening, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any preliminary questions for either one of the speakers? Commissioner Badami?
You mentioned during your presentation that no concerns with your plans have been communicated to you as of this date, but we do have a letter from a WB RIPS that's our exhibit 12, and he says he's not comfortable with the easement. Would you like to allow a read on that?
Yeah, you know, that's—you have a great eye, and you were able to catch something there that I'm—I'm happy you asked about. So originally, we were looking at a slightly alternative approach for our driveway. Because of the fact that it's a steep driveway, we—we looked at a few different approaches, and some of those involved working with our neighbor. What we ultimately decided to do, working with them, was to tier the retaining wall, as you see, instead of having one large retaining wall, and have it go through their property, which would have required an easement. So they were—they're supportive of the project. They were great working with us through that process, but we did change gears just a little bit to the new layout that you see with the driveway. So it is my understanding that they're in support of the project. I know they're here tonight, so I'm sure you'll be able to have a chance to hear from them.
Commissioner Badami, I had a similar reaction to the letter. It's dated 2017, and so they've had a lot of time to fix it, and the parties are now happy, and it's a moot point, but it's still a good catch.
Great catch.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Other questions? Vice Chair Hudes?
I had two questions. One was with regard to the—the driveway, and while it's—it's definitely a benefit that the slope is being reduced from the existing, it still is a noncompliant situation, so we have to have some findings about that. So I just wanted to ask you whether you considered other alternatives that would eliminate that steep grade of the driveway? I mean, I'm not sure how you get from point A to point B without that, but did you, for instance, look at putting the garage on a different level or other things that might have been considered to eliminate that?
Yeah, that's a great question, and—and it's a question I asked my civil engineer many, many times, to the point where I just got no mic. many times, to the point where I just got no mic. We can't do it anymore. So what we were able to do is get it to the greatest extent possible to 20 percent, and it was really a struggle to get there, and it's part of the reason we have a little bit more grading, is because we're, we're having to reconfigure it a lot to get it there. We did even look, just as you mentioned, about trying to bring the garage up, but that would have required a lot more grading, a lot more structural work up on the hillside, and we, probably a lot more cost as well. So that was an idea that we decided not to pursue.
Vice Chair.
So the other question I had, which may work against the first one, was regard to trees. So there's a tree, which is oak number 16 on the Town Arborist Report, and I think it's number 18 on your site plan on Sheet C1. It's a coast oak. It's not particularly large, but it's one of the few coast oaks in that part of the coastal oaks on that part of the property. So I was wondering if you had looked into retaining that particular tree, number 18? It's currently outside of the driveway.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that. Tree 16 is a tree that I actually think we can retain. It's one we studied several times, and our arborist was a little bit nervous about it, just because of the proximity where we'll be doing our work. But they typically do hold up quite well during construction, and you know, it's a, it's a tree that can withstand a little bit more. And so we'll do our best to retain Tree 16. I know that our neighbor would appreciate that as well, so we'll see if we can keep that one. Tree 18 is, because of the fact that we really did need to get more run in order to more gradually bring our driveway down, we needed to pull it out to the north a little bit. And so by doing that, we pulled it right into Tree 18. And so unfortunately, that tree, if we removed, if we maintained or kept that tree, we would be having probably a steeper driveway as a result.
So it's a trade-off with the slope of the driveway?
It's a little bit of a trade-off there, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
I'll now invite comments from members of the public. If you've not already turned in a speaker card, please do so at this time. When you call to speak, remember to state your name and address for the record, adjust the microphone, and you'll have three minutes. The yellow light will come on indicating you have 30 seconds left. You're not done. When the red light comes on, you're done. Jeff Funston.
Hi, I'm Jeff Funston. I live at 17440 High Street. We've, I live there, raised my kids there. I've bought the property in 1985, rented it for about five years till about right when the earthquake happened. And that, the reason for that is because my wife wouldn't live there. It was a, it was a house built like a deck. You know, that's what the foundation was, pier blocks. So I loved the property, but you know, there, she wasn't going to live there. So we rebuilt, went through the whole planning process, and, and finally, you know, we got to rebuild, I think, 90. So I know what Mike's going through, and that's why I'm here, just to support him. I know how difficult it is to go through all the process, and I think it'd be a great addition to the neighborhood, for sure. I know his house is similar to what I had to tear down, and you know, they're just not really livable anymore, unless it, you know, it's not a Victorian, it's not a historical piece of property, you know, house, so that's, I'm just here to support.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Thank you, sir. Taylor Stumpf.
My name is Taylor Stumpf. I live at 159 College Ave. Also here in support. Myself being a recent newbie to the town of Los Catos, it's, it's nice to see young blood coming to a new place, revitalize, modernize, and just looking at the plans of what Mike and Teresa have done, I think look exceptional. I think myself living on the hillside and a bunch of trees, fireproofing and fire saving are extremely important. Myself being in energy, I can appreciate the energy efficiency, and I think what they're bringing is going to improve the appearance of the hillside, as well as the community, which largely is in support of what you guys have been doing here in this room a long time before I've come here. So just again, wanted to express my, my support, so thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Ming Lee.
Ming Liu, and 17520 High Street. I'm here to support Mike and Teresa's project, and they have been communicating with us with their plan and project reviewed in person with my husband and I. And so being their uphill neighbor, and I, we don't, we don't see any problem with their construction, and there is no interference with anything that, whether it be our view or our access to our property or enjoy our property, so we're here to support them.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Clay Cougar.
I'm Clay Cougar, Ming's husband. We both live at 17520 High Street, which is just up the hill from Mike. I really like what he's doing with the house, with the new sightlines. I think it's going to be a great addition to the neighborhood. Owning a full-size three-quarter-ton pickup, I also greatly appreciate widening out the street to provide, you know, not only more parking, but also for getting around traffic, because that section is actually pretty narrow, and there's only a couple of places to get by. So I'm in full support of his changes.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? How much is he going to, how long is he going to widen, do you know?
It's what, two, about two car lengths? Three?
See if you can get him to do the whole street, when you, because it's, it would really help.
Well, yeah, I'd also like cable, while you're at it, and natural gas.
Thank you, I'm good.
About 80 feet.
Thank you. Kevin Rodriguez.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. So my husband and I have lived in Los Catos for the past several years now, and I've had the pleasure of seeing Michael's house, and I think it'd be a great improvement to the community, and it'll bring value. I've seen the driveway, and I've drove through it, so that's something I'm really excited about when I come to visit, to keep safety in mind, especially with the fire truck. So I appreciate that a lot, especially keeping safety in mind, and I'm looking forward to seeing the completed project. Thank you.
Any questions for the speaker? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Debbie Ricks.
Hi, I'm Debbie Ricks, and we live at 17480 High Street, right below the project. My husband Bill is here with me tonight, too, and we're here in full support of the project. We've lived at our home since 1979, and live next door to the people that, that Mike and Teresa purchased from that entire time. And so obviously, it's going to be changed for us, but we are, we're very excited about their plans. They've been in complete communication with us from the very beginning, and that's been, that's been very helpful. And taking a look at, we did talk to the planner, and taking a look at the, at the plans, and looking at the way that it is constructed so that it's back away, we won't see any of the new, any of the new construction, maybe a little bit where the driveway is. But the retaining walls, too, that I believe they were referencing before, too, are not, we're directly below, and that's not a problem for us, because we, there's plenty of room to do, to do plantings, like on our, our property on, on that part. It will be different, because they're having a swimming pool, and before, there were just orchards and things like that. But it's, like somebody else said previously, I think it's definite improvement and modernization, and we know we'll have a very fire-safe home above us, and we're, we're here in full support.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Somebody's trying to trick me. Coffee? Somebody was trying to trick me. All right?
Kurt Feldberg.
Pardon?
Yeah, there you go.
Come on down. I'm sorry, I couldn't do it.
Hi, my name's Kurt Feldberg. I'm one of the architects that worked on this project with Mike and Teresa, and so I'm just here to answer questions. I don't want to, you know, we're getting some great feedback from the neighbors, so we think it's a great project. So if there's any questions for us at the end, we're here to support it and talk about it, so.
Any questions for the speaker? We may, we may see you later. Lori Feldberg.
You could read mine, though. Lori Feldberg, Senior Principal with Dolan Group Architecture Planning, and we are the architects for the project. I just want to say how great it's been working with your staff and with Larry Cannon on this, to really make this a great house for the neighborhood. So we're here to answer questions, and we appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Paul Tercini.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Paul Tercini. I live at 121 Summerwood Drive in Los Catos. I've been a 60-year resident of Los Catos. I know that probably find that hard to believe, because I look so young, but I've been here for a while. I'm in complete support of this project. Michael and Teresa have been great, and the outreach that they've done, they've shared their plans. I see great improvement to the area. I, like everybody else, like that they're going to improve the property with the fire sprinklers and with safety in mind, and I think it'll be a beautiful addition to the neighborhood, and I'm in complete support.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Thank you very much.
Nothing about my age or anything, I'm good.
Steve Howard.
My name's Steve Howard. I'm Mike and Teresa's neighbor. I live at 17460 High Street. I'm actually familiar with the house. I did some work on it about 20 years ago, and the house definitely needs renovation. I think the work that Mike's proposing to do on the house is a great addition to the neighborhood, and I'm in full support of it. I think it will fit the neighborhood really well, and I think it's a beautiful architecture to home, so I'm in full support of it.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I have no other cards, so we will now give five minutes to the applicant to rebut any of the terrible things he's just heard.
Thank you very much. I don't think I have anything further to add or clarify, but again, happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions for the speaker? Commissioner Genof.
I just have to ask, your outreach to your neighbors is commendable. It's something that we don't always hear, being so thorough. Were there any changes that anybody requested of you that you made, or was the project basically perfect from the start?
Thank you for that question. We, you know, probably where we spent the most amount of time, to be honest, is with regard to the driveway, and really in anticipation of even this night, trying to make it the best driveway we could. You know, rolling the garage, the garbage bins and recycle bins up that driveway is quite a feat, so you know, we're, we're looking to make an improvement there, and that was something, of course, we worked with our neighbors on as well. So that was, that was primarily where we spent our time. We didn't have a lot of concerns from neighbors.
Well, I would, again, just have to commend you for that, that outreach is, it's exceptional.
Thank you.
Just one quick question also on the trees. I was looking at the Consulting Arborist Report, and, and I think you talked to Commissioner Hudes about Tree 18, but the Consulting Arborist Report did mention a couple of other trees, 47 and 14, that because of the retaining walls, or things, where things were going to be, that they might be in conflict with the plans. Now, I, I, we've had this happen before, where there's a timing issue. What I, all I wanted to know is if you've looked at the Consulting Arborist Report, and if you've discussed those trees and how they fit with the plans?
Yeah, so Tree 47 is, is one of our favorite trees on the property, and it, it does a lot of the screening there, because it's such a beautiful, large tree that's been there for quite some time. We, we did quite a bit of work to make sure that we increased the tree protection zone for that particular tree. For example, there is an existing wood retaining wall that, of course, is also failing, and that is about four feet off of the tree. So we're actually going to remove that very carefully, and we're going to build a new retaining wall, but we're going to be about eight feet off of the tree. So we're actually going to be giving this tree more breathing room, and we'll be very careful to make sure that that tree actually flourishes, it's going to be better off once we're done, I think.
Okay.
And then Tree, the other Tree number?
The other one you mentioned is 14.
Oh, yeah. So the question with Tree 14 is whether there was discussion about trying to keep that?
He, he, it was on the list to be kept. What he was saying was that he wondered if, if
Oh, I see.
Where the new retaining walls or whatever, if it was going to have a detrimental impact to the trees, and, and if so, you know, is there a workaround, or is there going to be adequate tree, tree protection? I'm, I'm interpolating what he said, but he, he just flagged those as ones
That's right, that's right.
That, that were on the list to keep that might be an issue.
So subsequent to that comment, we decided to eliminate Tree 14. So we, we did take the advice on that. We're showing that for removal. It's, it's probably not the best tree for its current context and everything, so we're, we're planning to remove that tree now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
So much.
I'll now close the public portion of the public hearing and ask if any Commissioners have questions for staff, wish to comment on the application, or make a motion. Commissioner Hansen.
I just wanted to confirm with staff. In reading through everything, it, my general sense was that on every point where there was a deviation from the hillside design guidelines and standards, that there was going to be an improvement from where the house is today to where it will be, maybe with the exception of the, the fill, but, but it looked like that. So did I read that right? It seemed like, you know, across the board. And by the way, I wanted to compliment staff on the excellent staff report. It was very, very detailed and thorough.
Thank you. I think you're, you're correct in that there's four exceptions being requested, and where he's, and those reflect the deviations from the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines. And I think in most cases, it is an improvement, including, you know, to the house, it's reducing visibility, and with the driveway, there's an exception for fill to obviously increase safety. So I think you're correct in that.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, comment? Commissioner Badami.
I have a comment, and I'm going to try a motion. So for me, I see this, as you stated, an improvement over the existing structure. The applicant, to me, has provided compelling reasons and evidence to support granting of the exceptions to the Hillside Design Standards and Guidelines. So I would move to approve Architecture and Site Application S-17-025, requesting approval for construction of an addition greater than 100 square feet to an existing second story, and to exceed the maximum building height for a single-family residence and for site improvements, requiring a grading permit on property zone HR1, and I can make the findings per Exhibit 2.
Is there a second? Commissioner Birch.
I will second.
Any discussion? I have some discussion. I want to, before we vote and then it's over, I want to thank everyone who's come down, and want to thank everyone who wrote letters. I recognize many of the names, because you sent letters. That's very helpful, and very much appreciated. And I'll reiterate what was said, staff did a great job. The Sullivan and partner have been very cooperative, respecting the Hillside Guidelines. This may influence the obvious vote, but I think it's a poster child for how to do things right. So thank you very much. Other comment? Commissioner Hudes.
I also appreciate the
Yeah, I also appreciate the exemplary public outreach on a project, and I just wanted to explain that it's important for us because there are exceptions that are being requested. And so while people may feel they were saying the same thing, it was important for us to hear that. So I want to thank you and the folks who came out.
Just for the record, we don't, Commissioner, I don't like to give exceptions. L-R-D-A, height, that sort of thing, but as was mentioned by staff, and this for the record, that, that the exceptions being requested were improvements on what was being there. Nobody's asking to make the house 10 feet taller. What they're asking for is reduce the height of the house. So as Commissioner O'Donnell would say, there's plenty of room here for discretion. Further comment? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights to this matter?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision to the town council. Forms are available in the clerk's office. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a short break. Five minutes, which usually 10, and then we'll resume with other matters. Thank you.
I will reconvene the meeting. We move to the other business portion of our hearings and consider item five, which is a draft proposed capital improvement program for fiscal years 2018-19 to 2022-23. Mr. Paulson, do you wish to comment before I turn to the commissioners?
I don't have anything to add. Mr. Morley is here this evening and will be available to provide a brief presentation and answer any questions.
Mr. Morley, thank you for being here.
Thank you. My pleasure to be here. Matt Morley, Director of Parks and Public Works. As you see in your packet, you have before you a memo and our capital, five-year capital improvement program. The important part of this is looking at it from a SEQA perspective and then also alignment with the general plan and various specific plans. And you have that in your memo as the recommendation. I thought I'd take us through some of the highlights of the projects just because capital program's such a fun thing to work with. Wanted to hit some of them, and these all are, have an element that aligns with our general plan especially, so we'll go through them quickly. The big one that's been ongoing is Almond Grove project. We are in the second year of paving streets there, and we'll be doing significant work along Tate and Masaw this summer, and we'll be expecting completion next year. So a nice project, and the streets are shaping up nicely in the Almond Grove area. If you haven't had a chance to walk it, it's a good opportunity to see sort of the before and afters and what a great project that is. We're doing a number of safety improvements, especially around crosswalk improvements. We have some improvements at Blossom Hill Road in North Santa Cruz and Los Gattis-Almadon Road in Cherry Blossom. Big areas where we have lots of attention, especially with school kids that are making those crossings. And we're doing some intelligent traffic signal upgrades, so we have a smart signal program. The best part about this is we have grant funding that we've been adding to this project, so we continue to cobble together dollars so that the town investment is less, and other people's money is the main source of funding for this one. This has been brought to us largely by the addition of a transportation mobility manager that the council added to our budget for the last year. And I'm happy to say that our transportation mobility manager's already brought in over a million dollars in grant funding since she started. So great progress and a great, great move to put us in position to fund ongoing capital projects. Obviously, cut-through traffic is an ongoing issue for us this summer. We're managing expectations and doing a lot of work on trying not to move the problem around, but to address it where it's at. So we'll be focusing on managing the Almond Grove area where we get impacted by traffic on an annual basis, and we will not be doing the closure at Wood Road. We have some latitude to be able to do some adjustments on closures entering into the Almond Grove area to help protect that area, but again, we want to avoid shifting the problem. On the park side, we had some town staff who attended a Parks and Rec seminar over the last month or so, and one of our more fit employees entered a competition and was successful in winning that competition. And out of that, the town is receiving a $30,000 piece of parkour sort of exercise equipment that will be placing one of our parks, so that's in our capital project. So it's an interesting little twist.
Oh, please, pray tell who and what.
It was our town attorney, Rob Schultz. He doesn't mean push-up. In the area of emergency preparedness, we have a number of, a number of good projects with a major focus on emergency preparedness this year, including upgrades to our emergency operations center communications equipment, continued efforts on our interoperability, which is a radio program to make sure that we can talk to other jurisdictions without talking over each other. We have an IT disaster recovery program where we're putting ourselves in a position to be able to retain our important files even through a disaster or hack of other, or other sorts. And significant work on neighborhood emergency preparedness where we're looking to take advantage of our cert teams and provide more neighborhood, get more neighborhood involvement in being prepared for emergencies to take on those situations, make sure the training's in place, and make sure we're outfitted with emergency equipment at a neighborhood location, at neighborhood locations. And then I wanted to hit a couple of the big projects. Those are really the fun ones. We are continuing to work on a Highway nine connector to the Los Gattis Creek Trail. This is another one that our transportation and mobility managers working on to bring additional dollars to the town. So we'll be starting the early phases of design on that one to get it to a shovel-ready project. Shovel-ready is a key word because once we get there, it becomes much easier to get other funding, and that's where we want to be with our project. So we want to get to that shovel-ready spot so that people, other agencies are encouraged to fund, help us fund those construction projects. We've added a new big project, widening the bridge on Blossom Hill Road or adding a pedestrian bridge. We haven't quite got there yet. We're going to do the initial study to determine what the best alignment is, and that will be taking place this year. Again, this is positioning, positioning the town for future dollars, and this one we're targeting Measure B as a potential source, to be able to fund additional ped crossings there. And we're also working on a council priority to take a look at a pilot for busing school kids to, to school and home in the afternoon. We've been doing significant outreach to the community, and we'll be bringing back a report to the, to the council in early June to talk to them about the feasibility of this, what it looks like, what the funding requirements are. And looks like we have very high levels of interest with this project in, from, from the community, so I'm anxious to continue to move that one forward. Specific to the downtown, we've got a couple of big things going on. One is a one-way street pilot program, so we're going to turn North Santa Cruz into a one-way street and take a look at how that looks over a sort of a semi-extended period time of a couple of months, and see what that impact has to other streets in the neighborhoods and how that affects the downtown businesses. We want to really take a look at that for the future of the downtown. And we'll also be undertaking sort of concurrently a downtown parking study, so we look at the parking demands in the downtown and the greater downtown area, including areas around the high school. And that's to try and take a holistic look at our parking challenges. And so I'll leave it at that. That's just a summary of some of the projects. Obviously, you have the, the draft CIP in your packet, and of course, we're here to support the conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Morley. And I should have done this while we still had an audience, but for the many people watching at home, this, this is the capital improvement program. It is a marvelous piece of work. If you have the time to read it, it's so informative about what's going on in town, commissioners and committee members and anyone interested. It's like reading our town in micro detail. Outstanding report. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Morley? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Just a, kind of a personal question. When you are going to open the access to Santa Cruz as opposed to the way, what you've done in the last few years, I live right by the high school, and sometimes if I come back from courtside or something and I'm coming down university, everything just stops because the right turn on, I don't go right on, at University in Maine, I go left. But everybody going right, one, has to wait for the pedestrians to cross the street; two, all the traffic in front of them is stopped. So you can sit there through multiple lights and go nowhere. I have parked my car far distant from where I'm going and walked across the bridge to get back to my, my place. And what you're doing this summer, it sounds to me, is going to make University a non-functioning street. So I'm wondering if you have any plans to grow potatoes there, what you're going to do with it?
Thank you. That's a, a great question, and we are anticipating that we will revisit some congestion, some extreme congestion in the downtown, especially on the heaviest of days. We're going to do a lot of outreach to the community. I think it's important that we know for, for the weekends, so a sort of a finite number of days, and really between hours of ten and two on, on the weekend days, that we pay attention to where we're headed, and we look for alternative means of getting from point A to point B, especially if we're in and around the downtown, that we take the opportunity to walk and to bike, use our downtown businesses in that way, and really support, support the community from that perspective, and look at some planning opportunities.
I assume you've already considered this, but I haven't, so I just asked the question. I've often wondered if you had a traffic control officer at some of those intersections where the intelligence is able to be used as opposed to just this poor signal up there that doesn't understand really what's going on. Have you looked into using traffic control officers?
Yeah, so we have looked. We've even used them in the past, especially at Maine and Santa Cruz, where we, we tried them early on in our experiences. What we found is the congestion is so bad that they have nowhere to move the cars to. So we're stacked up on North Santa Cruz all the way to Main Street, and so the officers end up not being able to move the cars anywhere, and it doesn't really help the situation, and it can be frustrating to, to those in their vehicles because it looks like the, the officers have, have nothing that they're able to do. So it's certainly something that, that we've looked at. We are completely open to ideas, and we'll continue to explore opportunities to provide relief.
Grant road closure got rid of that problem. So there must be, I assume the decision here doesn't relate to the effectiveness of that closure for the immediate area, but it must relate to the more distant areas?
Yeah, so I think, as I mentioned, we, what we found was we were really shifting and chasing the problem. So every time we made a change in one location, we chased it to a different location in, in town, and, and the apps are just a little bit quicker than we are to mobilize and put road closures in place and to further adjust, adjust for it. So knowing, knowing that the apps are, are driven by, by their users, we're, we're trying to sort of hunker down a little bit and protect the downtown and protect the neighborhoods and not try and shift, shift the issue. We've also heard a lot from the downtown businesses that when we did the closure, we crippled the businesses, and this will be an opportunity to allow them to take advantage of a somewhat captive audience and try, try and drive, drive those folks to, to their stores.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hudes here. Do you have?
Yeah, maybe one quick point on that question, and this is, this is an issue that I raised on the Alberta Way project, is I'm concerned that changes that are being made to the traffic flow might invalidate some of the EIRs and the TIA's that are coming with the EIRs with regard to the way traffic flows. So when we do make structural changes, it's a concern that the EIR may lose validity. In other words, it's, you know, it's like a bridge being out type of a situation, so we'll have to look at that closely where, where those kinds of changes are being made. I had one other brief comment in, on the, on the overall program, and, you know, there, I didn't see a lot of things in here that were really land use, that were planning commission. I appreciate the opportunity that is presented to us, but I, only indirectly, I wanted to comment on a few things that really are indirect because we sometimes approve projects that cause additional congestion. And so I, very supportive of projects 6305, 6103, and 6306 that are helping with disaster readiness and preparedness through the radio interoperability, the EAOC communications upgrade, and the neighborhood emergency preparedness. I think it's terrific that we are putting resource behind these efforts to increase disaster readiness and preparation and response.
Thank you. Comment?
I would share, share some of the, the credit on that one through the town manager's office and the police department, obviously the, the main leads on that program. And there were many, many folks who had input on this capital improvement program, including the finance department, that, that really helped put it together. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
I just had a comment and then a question. First of all, the, the document was excellent. It was really easy to read through and understand the projects and what they meant and where the money was coming from and going to. And I did notice right away, having worked on this for many years in other capacities, that we all of a sudden had more funding, and I didn't realize where it came from, so thank you for saying that in your presentation. I was also really happy to see that there was specific mention of some prior, longtime priorities for safe routes to schools, such as putting the sidewalk on Shannon Road, which I remember being brought up like three or four years ago. My question for you was about the bike and pedestrian master plan that was recently approved, and there was some mention of it in your document about, you know, projects kind of coming from that. Is there any specific project that's in the capital plan that comes out of the bike and pedestrian master plan?
Yeah, great question. Yeah, and, and certainly the, we, we look to the bike and ped master plan and our safe routes to school study that we did as primary sources of projects. We have a great project that we're, we're looking to bring forward at Blossom Hill Road and Roberts Road East, where just a ton of kids come out of, especially Fisher, and head down that, sort of that hill on Blossom Hill Road. We did green bike lanes in our early pilot of green bike lanes on that street, and we're looking to do some additional significant improvements, including sidewalk widening, sort of a minor road diet in that area to make some adjustments and make it more friendly to younger riders. I think it works now for, for somebody who's, who's rides a bike sort of in spandex type of a thing, but not for the, for the younger riders who, who might be a little more challenged. So we're looking forward to big improvements there, and that's definitely out of the bike and ped master plan, as is the crossing of the bridge across Blossom Hill Road and widening that and/or, or an alternate ped crossing.
Oh, and also the, isn't the Highway nine connector to the trail, it's been another, I think that was, okay, good.
We do feed quite a bit of projects into the capital improvement program from those, that work. So the, the master plans are essential to us in, in providing us guidance on, on filling out our CIP over time.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Birch?
Couple of quick questions. Do you have the timeline for your thoughts on the Blossom Hill? Very recently, I was driving my kids to high school, and I noticed that when these kids are coming out of school in a pack, there'll be two or three of them in the road because they all want to walk together, and then it was pushing the bicycles into the traffic to go around their friends, which, that's just kids, but I was curious what your timeline was.
So the, the construction at Blossom Hill Road and Roberts Road East should happen, it should start at least in this, in this coming fiscal year in terms of widening the, the bridge. That's a longer-term project, so it's brand new now. We're probably looking a number of years out on, on that project.
Okay. And then another quick question about the traffic mitigation, because we all know we're going to get a lot of questions about this. It looks like last year we spent about $100,000 on the mitigation, and I know there was a lot of pilot programs, and this year our budget's just a little over half of that. Does that allow for any emergency closures, or if we see that over a holiday weekend there's a need?
Yeah, the, the council gave us some pretty good latitude in making adjustments on the fly as we need to, and so we'll definitely be watching throughout the course of the summer and making adjustments as we need to, both between Parks and Public Works and the police department out, out in the field.
And then my last question is, I'm, I'm really excited about the bus study. I can stop driving down Blossom Hill to take my kids to school. If we're getting the feasibility study, I think you said in June, when you, if it looks good, when, how fast would that pilot program be?
So we're, we are currently planning two routes in January, so halfway through the school year.
Great.
So it's a, it's an aggressive, aggressive schedule. It relies on some funding elements coming together, so that'll be part of the discussion that we have with, with the council in June, is are they in alignment with our, with our plan and our funding, and, and what happens if some of the, the outside funding doesn't come through, that whole thing. So we're excited about it. I think there's some great interest in there. We ran into a little bit of price sensitivity, and that's sort of the, the biggie on what we're, what we're working through now, and so that'll be the ongoing conversation.
Thanks.
I have a couple of questions. On the trial run for the one-way, that would be North Santa Cruz heading south, and would you then have University heading north be one-way?
So our plan is to leave University at this point two-way, although that may not be the ultimate solution if this is successful.
So just the one-way south?
We haven't, we haven't made determination of south and north at this point, so we'll have that discussion as we, as we line it out. So there's arguments in favor of both. So if you make it one-way headed north, you take away the opportunity for, you reduce the, the, the cut-through traffic opportunities? If you make it south, then you take away the, the AM peak traffic that we experience.
If you make it north, everybody's going to try to go south on University with one lane.
That, that may be the experience, yes.
Okay. On page C36, you mentioned on widening the longer turn lanes, Shannon Road near the schools. It made, made me think, to extend the length of the left turn lane allows the cars to get in there. And we've mentioned in the past that on Los Gattis Boulevard, heading south, as you approach Almadon-Los Gattis, or Los Gattis-Almadon, there's a left, left-hand turn lane there, and that queue oft, during the peak hours in late afternoon, that queue comes out into the road, so that the cars trying to turn left are now in the lanes that are headed due south, and it makes for some swerving and hazardous conditions. I don't think there's been any, any harm in that so far, but if we, if we can lengthen one, we should look at that other queue, because when it comes out into the southbound lanes, it's, it's kind of risky. Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Morley.
Thank you.
How long would that trial be, north or south on Santa Cruz? How long do I have to leave town?
So we'd like to, from a staff perspective, we'd like to run it for several months to be able to really experience it, but we have yet to had, have that conversation with the council, so we'll, we'll have to.
Several months?
Yeah.
If you did do it, would you consider 45-degree parking instead of parallel? Or is that parallel? I mean, you could get a lot more spaces of parking if you did do it.
So there's a lot of ideas that could be incorporated, parallel parking, sidewalk seating, bike lanes, a whole, a whole slew of things that could be included in the project. Yes.
Thank you. Forgive me for digressing. We're, we're supposed to find that the CIP is consistent with the general plan, the North Forty specific, the Albright specific, and the Hillside specific. I'm prepared to make a motion unless anyone sees a conflict with any of those. All right. Then I'll recommend to the town council that we've provided the opportunity. I haven't. Does any member of the public want to, want to speak to this item? Good. That we've provided the opportunity to the public to address this item. I find that the project is exempt pursuant to the adopted guidelines for the implementation of SEQA, Section 1506-1B3. I find the potential projects in the 2018-19 to 2223 draft proposal CIP are consistent with the general plan, North Forty specific plan, Albright specific plan, and the Hillside specific plan. And I recommend that we recommend to town council to approve the 2018-19, 2022-23 draft proposed CIP. Can I have a second? Commissioner Birch?
I will second.
Do we have a discussion? My goodness, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Mr. Paulson, there are no appeal rights. What happens from here?
From here, as part of the normal budgeting process, the capital improvement program will be considered by the council, and the, I think the tentative schedule currently is May 15th. They'll be considering the operating budget as well as capital budget.
Thank you. I'll turn to commission matters, and I have an item I wish to bring forward. I want to point out that Vice Chair Hudes practically came here from the airport after flying 72 hours from Asian countries all over the place and dragged himself in here fully prepared, and he's quite a fellow. I'd have gone to bed. Any other, Commissioner Birch? Did you fly in?
No.
Any other commission matters? Do we have a report from the director of community development?
Just briefly, last week, council had their normal regularly scheduled meeting. At that meeting, they approved the Nick's Raw Bar restaurant that the planning commission recommended. They also approved the ordinance amendments, general plan amendments for the plan development ordinances that the planning commission also recommended approval of, so they approved that as well. And then there was a third thing. Now, we're in the middle of general plan. We've received proposals for the general plan update, and so they also adopted a resolution which states the parameters for selecting up to five additional members to be added to the GPC to form the general plan advisory committee, which will be involved in the general plan update. And along with that resolution, there was also some guiding principles to help guide that work as the general plan committee moves through that process.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson, and thank you, Mr. Morley, and thank you, Mr. Schultz. We have a comment?
I had a question. I have watched the town council meeting on the video, and I noticed that, that council member Specter voted against the plan development ordinance, and, and the reason that she gave was about the public benefit. And now we had the lengthy discussion about the public benefit issue, and we recommended to put a definition of the public benefit and, as well as some examples. So did, was that incorporated in their motion to approve and, because it?
It was not. And so staff, in the staff report, if you take a look at it, that was one of the eight items that we actually carried forward, asking for input or providing the input that the planning commission provided. They chose not to further discuss that.
Okay, yeah, I, I sort of saw it in there, but, you know, it kind of went fast, and so they, so it's, it's still an open item, so I totally understand the question then. Okay.
Commissioners, thank for your preparation, and thank you for your work tonight. This meeting is adjourned.